Does anybody know? Oh, Brian is remote, okay. Hey, Brian.
Howdy, howdy.
How are you?
I'm here.
I'm vacationing.
I wish it was vacationing.
He's our remote guy.
Yeah, well, glad to have you.
We missed you this morning.
Okay, um, well, why don't we jump right in? Um, and start with item one. Review. Is Kirsten, do we want to wait for her?
I think we should, because she's the chair.
She's on her way then. Okay. Then let's move down to item two.
Mayor, can you make sure everybody's mics are on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You didn't want to hear me.
Except, except Janet.
Well, I had to hear you. I just wanted to understand you if I had to hear you.
Okay.
Okay, well, then let's, uh, get right into use of emergency exit, or emergency fire exit off Maple Drive. So, uh, the email Salem has requested just our, um, approval of, uh... Well, actually Larry, do you want to come up and explain it? And then we can answer any questions? Or you can answer any questions?
Oh, yeah, turn.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, good job.
There you go.
Larry Myler, um, yeah, after I spoke to someone in the, in the city here, I can't remember who it was, I went and talked to Matt, the city manager in Salem. I said, "So what, what's going on? You made a request of some confirmation." I think confirmation is what cities Salem is looking for.
Yeah.
That there was an agreement that, you know, your city, their city, and the Davis family had all agreed. And so, yeah, I think we all have a copy of that agreement now. It was dated, um, the 30th of December 2005. And it has to do with...
Could we get that copy in our packet?
Uh, I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't get it in mind.
Okay, well, I've got it, yeah.
And so, in pertinent part, uh, this paragraph four says as a... And this is signed by the mayor of Woodland Hills, the mayor of Salem, and by the Davises, which I think we stepped into their shoes now. So, this applies to us as owners right now. So, as part of this agreement, I'm quoting now paragraph four, "Davis agrees to provide emergency access for both ingress and egress across the Davis property in the event of a wildfire in Woodland Hills or the surrounding area." Um, the next sentence is interesting. "As future development occurs on the Davis property..." So I guess that's where I come in, right? Future development, so here we are. "As future development occurs on the Davis property in Salem, Salem and Davis agree to align the streets and roads thereon in a manner which will provide for continuing emergency fire access through the Davis property on a permanent basis." So I took that to mean that we can't willy-nilly just close it off from a fire. We can keep a gate, we can keep a crash gate, we can... We don't have to have free flow of, of traffic. I think that's what residents of Woodland Hills on, on Maple Drive were worried about. But the way I read this, uh, and the way our attorney reads it, we need to maintain a permanent fire escape. And that was what both mayors and the Davises agreed to. And so we're, I think we're obligated as new landowners to perpetuate that. That's kind of what we decided to do anyway, so.
And, and just to clarify, Carrie, I mean, so Salem didn't necessarily ask us to offer an interpretation of the boundary adjustment agreement. They just said, "We want firm approval from Woodland Hill City." And so, to Larry's point, I think that, and, and I agree, and I've talked to Ted about this. So this is the successor in interest on the Davis property, them fulfilling their obligation under that boundary line adjustment, which I, I, Ted is comfortable with it, he's indicated, and, and so that's... It would not become a roadway.
Right. I remember this agreement from, from that back in the past. I just hadn't, didn't see it in our, just for, as an update to our agenda item.
Yeah, no, I mean, and it candidly wasn't necessarily going to be what we would talk about. But it, now that you've brought up that point, it does make sense that it does fit in with what you as the new owner of the Davis property are obliged to do.
So we're not, you know, we're not having the permanent open roads that we had initially planned. I think we got a lot of pushback on that, so we backed off of it. But seems like that crash gate and the fire, uh, access needs to stay.
Would you keep it? I mean, it's been a dirt road all this time. We've never really used it for fire escape. But I do agree that, um, that's, that's, um, something that we would want to have. Um, would we keep that then gated and a dirt road leading to your paved road?
Well, you can do whatever you want to do on your side, because it's your city. Um, the city of Salem is asking us to pave it up to the gate.
Okay. Because I know it does cross some private property on our side.
It does, but there's a, there's an easement in place in the, in the property owner, Sterling, I believe. I don't think he can block it, so.
No, I don't think so, because of the easement. But I don't know if he wants it paved on our side.
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's not, we're, we're not even going there.
Yeah, so if Salem requires us to pave it, but as we come up to Sterling's property line, which is only a little triangle at the, at the gate area, if Sterling doesn't want us to pave that, I'm sure Salem won't make us pave it against Sterling's desire. So, we'll, we'll do whatever Salem wants us to do up to the point where it's our property, I guess, and then that's the end of that. So, um, the next, the next sentence, just as an FYI, "In addition, Davis agrees to allow use of the pond on the Davis property for potential firefighting purposes in the event of a wildfire in the immediate vicinity." So, just wanted to give you an update on that. The, the pond that's there now, we will be keeping but shrinking because of the way the road and the lots and the fault lines and everything goes. So we're going to be cutting that probably in half, so it's going to have less capacity for a helicopter to come and, you know, dip out of it. However, we're, we're putting a pond in on the north end, on the flat part down by 1280. And we're happy to make that available for fire. And that's going to be bigger than this pond anyway. So I think the net effect is we'll have more fire capacity, more water available.
So then Mayor, well, we need to have a new agreement just with, with, with one pond smaller and the larger pond to make sure that we can use water from both ponds, if necessary?
Yeah, I mean, it would be something that if, and I have not talked to Ted about that, but in terms of the capacity that we would need for something like that, I don't know.
Let us know what you would like us to do, because obviously it's in our interest to stop a fire.
It would be of big interest.
Well, it saved us last time.
It is, yeah.
It made, it made the difference.
Doesn't federal law trump everything, though, in this regard? I think they'll, they'll fly in and they don't care.
They'll take water, grab whatever water they want.
I've heard they hit swimming pools before.
But not all of our, but not all of our incidents might, might be federal. Last time it started on federal land, so it was a federal incident. If it started on our own property, it'd be a city in, it'd be a city incident. If it starts on state, it'd be state. So depending on where it is, but we'd need water regardless of which of the three it was.
And if fire starts, our, our interests are aligned.
Yeah, right. Your Salem, your Salem Fire Department will be interested in that water source, too.
Yeah, and we want to make it available anytime it's needed in the area, so.
And Larry, I, I would ask that, to the extent that that would be an alteration of, of what is understood in the boundary agreement, I think that if, if you could give us a formal proposal in terms of how you're going to reduce the capacity, and that way we can make an informed decision in terms of, okay, well, we need X cubic yards of additional capacity.
I'll, I'll let you know that. Do you have another two minutes for me to talk about one other issue that comes up in this agreement? It's, um...
Well, so we've got to be a little bit careful, because if it's not on our agenda, um, but we can certainly...
We can talk about it later, but I just wanted to, um...
Well, give it, give us the teaser if you would.
Well, why don't I give you an update on what's happening on the site, since things are going on. We're, we're digging test holes, we're digging fault examination trenches, we're knocking down trees where the roads will be and where the golf fairways will be. So there is activity on the site. We, we put up new signs, no trespassing signs. It's now, we're a construction site, and so we don't want anyone to get injured. Uh, every time I'm up there, I'm, I'm seeing someone on a bike or someone hiking from Woodland Hills, and...
I follow the high path, so I saw the pictures.
Oh, good, okay, excellent.
I sent them to everybody.
Excellent. So, so I gently stop people when I'm up there and see them, and I, and I ask that they don't come on the property, and they spread the word to people to not come on the property. Last thing we want is someone to fall in a 10-foot trench.
Do we have a sign or anything on the gate by chance?
Uh, I put one on the gate, Sterling took it off, but we'll try to put it back on. On the, certainly on the north side, we have a sign saying caution, danger, construction. So if you could spread the word...
Maybe the construction thing would keep them.
Yeah, I, I, well, people have been walking since the construction started. But I just, I'm really mindful. I, I once had a development project where someone died on site, and I have never been the same since. And so if we could...
We can put something on our social media.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure we're not endangering anybody.
And probably make a newsletter, too.
It would break my heart if that happened, so.
Let me know, and I can assist in that.
So is any of the digging close to us, or is it all on the north end?
So far, it's more on the north end, but there will be some on the east side, closer to the south end. And again, those are about, you know, eight or 12 feet deep, so we can catch the activity, the fault, and document it. So, anyway.
All right, well, that's a great, great suggestion. Thank you for that update, and, uh, thanks for the explanation on this, too.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Mayor, quick comment on the fire escape. Um, one of the things that that's used for is get, to get to the water tanks. And we've had some issues with the, the plowing. So that will need to be something that's, that's addressed at some point. But because we're on the fire escape, I thought I'd mention that now, that, uh, we've, we've actually blocked Salem's access up into there, so that is, is something that we kind of need to discuss. And it's, it's really difficult with a gate there to clear that area, so.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. And Ben has brought that up a time or two in our staff meetings, too. So we, we do have it on our radar, so, uh, but, uh, the solution is something that does need to be worked through, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
But yeah, it'd be something to work with, with three pines, uh, or three bridges on, and, and, you know, coming up with some kind of plan for that, and, and Sterling as well.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, does anybody have any other comments or questions on that item?
Kirsten's here.
Okay, yeah, I saw it. Okay, thanks Larry, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then let's jump back to item one. Review of RFPs submitted for the completion of strategic and general plan and recommendation. Kirsten, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry for my delay.
It's okay.
Um, yes, so we met some of the selection groups. Um, the, the one that scored highest had almost half as many hours that they said they would be putting toward the project. So there was concern if that was going to be enough to cover the scope of the project. So after a lot of discussion, um, we ultimately decided and voted on not going with that first option. So then we assessed the second one, and the second one was Sunrise. So Sunrise scored really well, um, across the board. And, um, personally, their RFP was really well laid out, very detailed, included things we were concerned about, like including in-person, um, open houses, you know, a website, things like that, that would make sure that we are communicating with all community members and making sure that all are aware of this and using multiple ways of communicating that, of online and in person. Um, so there was, there was elements of that. So, um, when we went to vote on that one, that one got the majority of the vote and was, like I said, the second one in the ranking. So, that's how it laid out, so we would recommend putting that one forward to you all.
Is that Sunrise Engineering, or is it a different group?
Um, is it, is it Engineering?
Yes.
Isn't that group, okay.
Planning.
It's the planning, the planning side of the, the planning side of Sunrise Engineering. But... Very good proposal.
Yeah, and, and additionally, so when we first ranked them, the cost was not, um, showed to us. So we just based them on, you know, just comparing some of the different criteria without taking in consideration the cost. Then when we met and voted on them, we saw the costs, and were able to take those into account as we made the vote to then recommend to you all. And they did fall within the budget, so we don't have to ask all the additional. So that was something else that we took into consideration. Also looked at considering the hours that they proposed and cost per hour and things like that. And overall, they just kind of seemed to be a good fit for what we're looking for.
Well, thanks to you and the committee for your efforts. And, uh, anybody have any questions?
This might be the wrong question, but do we have a timeline with this going forward?
They, they, in detail, outlined a schedule as well as provided a Gantt chart. So, you know, a schedule sheet that showed what it would be and when it would be all within, probably it was about a nine-month, nine, 10-month span of time.
We requested it had to be finished before 12 months, from start to finish.
Yeah, so it had all of that outlined, including coming for Woodland Hills Days, things like that, just to, again, make sure that we're getting as many residents as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions?
All right.
Yeah, so what, was there any significant deficiencies with the, the one that scored the best in Sunrise? Was there anything that we're going to, to not see? I mean, it concerns me that, that the other, the other scored better.
Like I said, there was concern that their amount of hours, like I said, was about half. Um, so that would have had to be something that would likely would have had, you know, to be negotiated if we had moved forward with that. Um, additionally, there was concern that they didn't talk to as much about the strategic plan side of things. Um, focused a lot just on the general plan, and we want to make sure that we're incorporating both of those, um, with these funds. You know, a strategic plan that's then driving the general plan. Um, so, and again, we have general plan people on the commission. They were all in favor of voting for that, so.
Yeah, the planning commission, Severn was in favor of Sunrise.
Hey, Brian.
Yes.
Part of the reason they received more of the points was because they had the lowest cost.
Okay, okay, if it was just cost, then I, then that's probably...
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for, was what their, yeah, what their win was.
Costs were distributed with a linear equation, and what kind of put them over the bump, the firm that was not selected, was because they had a much lower cost.
Okay, fair enough. Perfect, thank you.
Which related to the number of hours.
Like I can confidently say, based on the RFP proposal, again, taking out costs, we preferred Sunrise over them. It's more higher overall, as far as the proposal quality.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
You might mention, we did receive five proposals as well.
Yes.
So there was a bit of a selection.
And a good amount of them were quality. There was one, I think we all agreed was not great, but most of them were great. I was actually really thrilled with the quality of them to where it was a little bit like, oh, these are all, they, most of them could offer a great product for us and a great outcome. So I'm excited about it.
I'd like to get started.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good process.
All right, item three, appointment of Parks, Trails, and Recreation cocommittee chairs and secretary. Brian?
Yes, so, uh, as I, as I talked about at the last council meeting, um, the, the PTR committee has, had voted to, um, keep Sherry Berger on and add Dennis Lysenby as our co-chairs for Parks, Trails, and Rec. And Judy Patel had, had agreed to, and, and they voted to have Judy be the secretary. So that's what we're proposing to vote on tonight as a council.
Great. Any questions for Brian, comments?
Um, something kind of related. So the state, uh, reached out to me, and they want to do a service project in connection with Woodland Hills Days, and, uh, the state conference is actually the weekend before Woodland Hills Days. Um, so they asked me for some ideas, and I gave them the suggestions of, like, the mailbox, the roundabout, like sprucing that up, or some work in the park. Um, so I don't know, we can talk about it some more, but I need some ideas. She wants me, she wanted me to ask you guys tonight, um, since you're talking about parks and trails, um, for suggestions for a project. You know, I mentioned the path, how we want the path to go from the asphalt to the pavilion, you know, adding that, and maybe doing some with some sand, kind of leveling out some of the little pits and stuff in the ground, like that people could come and do that, some things like that. Um, they asked about maybe trimming some trees in the forested part of the park, um, where the disc golf is. They said some of the trees are kind of blocking, maybe having a little trim.
You mean making it largely unplayable? I think five holes where you just have to basically...
You're not very good, are you? That would be another way of saying it.
So, so I'm, I'm not going to suggest the switchbacks, because I feel like PTR gives their, most of their attention to that. Um, so I was trying to think of things in our actual city park that needed maybe some work or something that they could do as a service project, so those are kind of what I came with.
Do they want to pay for a pickleball court?
I know. I asked her if she had a budget, and she said she was going to find out, but probably not.
Yeah, it's probably not that.
That's great.
But, so if you, so just think about it, Brian, and if, um, kind of follow up with me if you can add to that, or, you know, whatever.
Yep, I know, I'll, I'll bring it up to them next week at our, at our meeting.
Okay, but again, I did not offer the switchbacks, so.
Yeah, okay.
And I think because there will probably be people that wouldn't be able to hike up there, so that would exclude them, so any, uh, I'm not going to have them do the water bars. I'm just saying, I know you need volunteers, but I'm not offering that.
And, and that's, that's actually happening, uh, this Saturday.
Saturday.
So they're going up this Saturday. Um, so, well, they might be doing it again later. We're, you know, they're, they're doing some things this Saturday to try to get what they can done.
Okay, all right.
I'd even say the city building here.
Around the city building or the mailboxes, I mean, there's plenty of spaces.
Well, I offered, I offered the mailboxes, that was the first one I said. Um, the city building, I mean, we just put in a new lawn, I don't know what else.
Oh, there's a lot of beds that need some serious love and...
Or planting flowers.
Weeding.
Okay.
When do they want to do Woodland Hills Day?
No, the weekend before, the Saturday before, when state conferences.
So, and right before, it's all going to die from frost anyways, um, two weeks later.
Yeah, so for planting flowers, it's pretty late in the year. It would, but I mean, the trimming the trees and maybe, you know, putting in the path would be nice right before Woodland Hills Days.
Getting any down branches.
And just kind of sprucing up the park before we have Woodland Hills Days there. I think that would be nice.
Yeah, okay. All right, I will, I will bring that up. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian.
Alan Wakefield.
Dan does that already.
Alan wants to do some wiring out there for the lighting. Remember that? Is that, that's not done yet, is it?
No, it's not. We still got to get those holes down.
But anyway, that's something else, but, okay. Okay, uh, item four, proposal to amend the Woodland Hills consolidated fee and rate schedule to allow non-exclusive, nonprofit, and community benefiting organizations usage of the Woodland Hills City Center without a fee. Ben, it's a mouthful.
Glad you read it, not me. Um, so basically, this is fairly straightforward, I hope. Um, just here on this fee schedule, asterisk, "The city center or pavilion may be reserved without any charge if the event meets all of the following." Emphasis on "all." Uh, "The event needs to be non-exclusive, the event needs to be for nonprofit, and the event must benefit all residents of the community." Um, so hopefully it, it won't be able to be, you know, abused by any organization that wants to try and to jump in. Um, but it also would allow the taxpayers, in my opinion, of, of the city to be able to use the building that they pay for for things that benefit the city as a whole.
So are we taught, what kinds of things? Because when you say benefit all, so say we're saying a nonprofit, non-exclusive church activity that may not benefit all.
That is exclusionary.
Okay, so, so what, what, give us an example.
So like empty nesters, for example, is an exclusive, is an exclusionary group, right?
Right.
Um, while still beneficial, it would not. So Be Ready is predominantly one of the largest beneficiaries here.
Okay.
Um, I've been also requested by, um, another resident that is doing a nonprofit, uh, like quilting day for, um, a local charity that wants anybody and anybody who can, that's also under a nonprofit entity.
Okay.
But it would be...
And they could use any, either the, is it just for the park pavilion, or is it for the city building?
For the city center. So the city center or pavilion.
Because it's kind of under the park pavilion part in here, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, it just has that asterisk there.
So Ben, we used, we used the city center for our fire department dinner, and I didn't even think about paying the rent.
Well, that would be a departmental usage.
So that was, that was already okay? And we'll send you a bill.
I know. Ted's got lots of...
Plus a penalty.
Well, it would be high interest rate, I bet.
As long as the council approves the payment.
Well, anyway, that's...
Yeah, that would be a slapping one side of our own face. But yes, that, my goal is basically just...
There's only a few people who would qualify as what you're saying, that it would be beneficial.
And it, and it benefits everybody. That's, that's the piece that I really want, because I, I think the, the building should be used, um, in a way that represents the city well and benefits the city, um, as a massive whole.
I'm staring at Jody, because I hope it's easy to...
Jody usually likes to throw some curveballs.
It's easy to discern which ones were which, right?
Oh, and she's got that curveball looking around.
Yeah, she does.
It's not very easy to discern, because, um, some people can say it's open to everyone, and in reality, when they publish it, it's not. The other concern I have is, we have tried allowing groups to use the building in the past, um, and with young children, there has been substantial damage to the building. And so when you make it non-exclusive, you know, you're allowing families then, who are nonprofit, to come in and use the building. That damage, who's going to be responsible for it?
So here's, one thing I did propose initially was a fourth item, um, which I still think actually might be a good idea, is you would also need a council member sponsor. Um, so basically, they would have to come to us, we would then have to pitch it. So they would have to first convince one of us that it would fall into this criteria. And we would also then be the ones that would let them into the building. We would be the ones that would take them out. So there's a hurdle there as well. You'd have to convince one of us to almost take on that accountability.
So what do we do if there is some damage? I mean, because even though we might sponsor it, doesn't mean we're going to be here for their event.
That's why you need a deposit.
I mean, if they ask, if they ask you to come to the quilting event, and it's an all-day thing, you're not going to sit here all day quilting.
But I didn't say that the council member has to be here the whole time also.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if they're bringing their, to Jody's point, if they, if it's a, a group that's bringing children, and they're busy doing their thing, and the kids are just running around, then is there anything that we could put in there when they sign it? Yes, this is free, but if there's damage, you're responsible.
I think they can sign.
I think so.
I think they could sign that in that contract.
I think they could sign a rental agreement, uh, something, I, I think, just like anyone else does.
Require them to also put a deposit down? I mean, we've had paper towel holders come off of walls before we've had toilet paper holders come off walls, we've had, you know...
I would say they would need to be...
The blinds in here got ruined a quite a few times.
I would say, what if we just, I, I don't know what the legal aspects of this are, so maybe this will be a bad idea. But if it's a, if it is, it has to be a resident of the city, it would have to be the one that's renting the facility.
So we need to put that in there, resident only.
And they would be having a, a water bill that we could then bill for damages.
Need a deposit and an agreement signed.
I mean, the, the agreement for sure, the deposit, I mean, it's a matter of the level of risk that you would regard this, the residents as. I mean, if they're, if it's a tolerable risk, which I think that you could make the case. I mean, first of all, I don't even know how many people are going to actually even avail themselves of this option, but...
I don't think many.
But if, I, I do think that your point is good, Carrie, that we do need to make sure that it's residence, um, only. Um, and I, and I like the, I like the council sponsor, but I think that if we, if we do have them sign some sort of a damage...
Yeah, I don't think we need the deposit so much, as long as they've signed that this is the agreement, if there is damage, you will be held responsible.
You will be billed.
Yeah, you will be billed, right?
And I mean, five hundred dollars is not gonna go very far anyway, even if we had a deposit, I mean...
Well, and the ones who use it on a consistent level, you know, like every month for their meeting, it would be hard to come up with a deposit.
Somebody wanted to teach aerobics or something in there, they could offer it to everybody in the community, and it could be free, and they could just come and do it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think...
That would be a good one, actually.
Maybe we kind of put that on...
I'll just add it to the list.
You know what the event is, right? So if it's a quilting event, cause that has the potential, I think, of, of having potential moms, young families bringing kids that then could get run rogue.
Well, exercises do.
Right, then, I think that has a potential for damage, more so than, say, Be Ready. Right, the only thing I think we have maybe with a potential problem with Be Ready is falling asleep or something, right? Pending, no, I just, I joke, but I think there could be a reason for a deposit pending event type.
I mean, I, to me, if, if we're gonna require a deposit, we should require it across the board. If we're not, which I think is also, I think that's, I think that's a manageable risk, in my opinion. That's something that if it's a resident, we can, we can probably chase that down, you know?
I think if they just sign a damage, the damage, um...
The council person can chase that down, how about that?
The damage waiver, and then, um, if there is damage, then we go back and say, "This is damaged."
Yeah.
"It occurred during the time period you were here." And, um, and as an organization, either they pay it, or the person who's responsible pays for it.
Yeah, whoever's signed, I think, is on the hook.
They're a resident, so...
And, and I think that if it becomes problematic, I mean, we can just...
Strip it.
Yeah, get rid of this.
I'd hate to say no with potential what-ifs versus maybe strip it out if we have a problem.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's fair, Wayne?
Three areas, I think, to give consideration. Um, somebody's responsible for cleanup, when, whenever they sign up to do that, that that person's name be set forth, so we know who to go after if, if that's a problem.
So that would be a part of the responsibility for damage too.
Secondly, I think these chambers should be off limits to any rental. We've got electronic equipment in here, and it's very easy to get messed up. And so this room should not be, uh, exposed to that, that sort of activity.
Good suggestion.
And if you're going to then, I think there needs to be some policy written as to acceptable types of behavior's not a good word, but, but what the city expects from those who are going to be occupying and, and using the facilities here. Kind of a, bit of a policy thing, in a general sense, uh, so that it's not, uh, uh, problematic for people, but, but a certain standard adhered to, uh, in some kind of a written policy.
Don't we have that already?
Do we have that already with rentals?
I don't...
No, that's exclusive. Laurel said wine tasting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't go far enough. You don't have any regulation about firearms in here. So there's things that need to be looked at and added to, maybe what, what we have already.
We can't carry?
No, no, I'm not saying that, but there needs to be...
Uh-oh, there's another one.
I think that's going into the weeds too much, on, on just the intent of what this is for. I think that's too much in the weeds.
I mean, that's, I, I don't wanna torpedo it, um, I mean, I, 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 I agree with that point. I mean, I, I think that that would be something that we could potentially fine tune, but I, I, I would agree that, I mean, if we get too bogged down in underlying policies that then need to be enacted. I mean, I, I think that what we've talked about so far should provide a reasonable level of protection against the city facilities and...
Yeah.
And, and, and again, if it, if it becomes abusive, then we just pull the plug together.
Resident only, council member sponsor, damage waiver, or a, sign a damage waiver, sign...
That should be anyway, when anybody rents.
And that, and that, and adding in that they will clean up, and then no use of the council room.
So, all those are already in the form?
Right.
That they have to fill out when they request to use the building, including no alcohol, no pets in the building, no, you know? I'm sorry, that's just one of those things, but those are, if you want me to revise the form, I can, but those are already...
I figured those should already be in place.
Even no open...
So that's already...
Yeah, and no open firearms is even in there, no fireworks, no...
So we would only really need to add a fee waived box with council member sponsored name. And the only thing I'd also add is, in my opinion, with that council sponsor, you know, like every Be Ready, I come, I open the building, and then I come back at, at the end, if I'm not here, and then I lock. Um, that way, I never hand out my code to anybody. And, cause we've had some random codes get out, um, we've had people getting in this room that shouldn't have. Um, and we just have to make that extremely one-hundred percent crystal clear.
Well, they just had to change the code downstairs for the fire department, because too many people had the code, right?
Yeah, we'll be swapping a lot of stuff.
We're all gonna get new codes soon?
And, and, um, I, I think that, uh, I, I, I agree with that approach too. I, I think that that improves the accountability, um. So, I, I mean, I, I'm in support of it. My, my concern is the administrative burden. The other reason I like the council sponsor is because then it doesn't fall to Jody to have to be here, you know?
Yeah.
Some events that, well, she's up at 4:00 AM, so I don't know, maybe a 2:00 AM event.
Well, I just think it, it puts one more layer of, of complication, of kind of oversight also. We would have to be the ones that vet them. We're the ones that say, "Yes, I believe this falls under the guidance we set up." And then if we find out it didn't, then we get to come to this meeting and account for our decision.
I think that's good, I think those are appropriate checks and balances.
So, so are you, with, with, with the council, uh, sponsor, are we also looking at getting council approval?
Now, I, I, I think that the sponsorship would just be checking those boxes to make sure that it meets in that council member's opinion.
So my, my only, well, one of my concerns, again, it goes back to, to Carrie's, uh, you know, having a resident, is we don't wanna make this so open that Be Ready patient can come over and use our, our building because it's, because they meet those three criteria, right? Um, or, or something, I mean, letting anybody, you know, if they meet the criteria, they automatically get it, right? So that's where I'm, I think it needs to have s- someone or the whole council. If it's just one person, it needs to be written in that, that, you know, it has to be approved by a council person or the mayor. Um, and, and they're the sponsor. Um, not just open, you know, not just, you meet these criteria and it, a- a- and you're an automatic. Um, but we need to have that somehow to do a selection on that, so that we don't have... Uh, because here it says, you know, residents of the community. Well, is the community Woodland Hills, or is the community Utah County, is the community Utah State, that, you know...
We just say resident of Woodland Hills.
Yeah.
So where it says, "The city center or pavilion may be reserved by a resident of Woodland Hills without any charge if the event meets the following criteria."
Okay, I'm gonna throw a little kink in this. Not all residents of Woodland Hills receive a water bill, because you have rentals.
But they're still a resident.
They would still need to contact us, one of us.
We have no way to recoup any charges or damages, cause we cannot...
The chances of that are so slim.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't say throw it out because of that.
Name and address and everything, I just...
Okay.
So Ben, do you want to revise this based on the input? And, I mean, I don't know if you feel that you, I mean, I guess we could propose a motion with great specificity.
I'll read, I'll rewrite this right now, and then I'll reread it in the council session.
Okay.
And then I'll make the motion on it with those changes and...
It's not on the agenda for council approval, because it's a fee. Our fees now have to require a public hearing.
Okay.
So any fee that the city charges or changes on the city fee schedule, you have to hold a public hearing. So we'd first have to hold a public hearing, and then adopt.
So I'll redraft that, Jody, and send it back over to you.
Public hearing to remove a fee, huh?
Yeah.
Or to add a no fee to the fee schedule.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's funny.
Sounds like government.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, um, unless there's other comments or questions on that, we'll move on to item five. Proposal to adopt a social media policy, Janet?
Um, we had this brought to us before, and just with some of the citizens' comments and things that have gone on, on the community page, which is not our page, but the, the lines are kind of blurred between the city page, the official page, and the community page a little bit. And I think we need to crisp those up a little bit. And so part of that is, um, you know, looking at this and just, we, we all need to come to an agreement, and then we need to put it on the agenda to get it approved. So a couple of things, section four, council approval required. On this official Woodland Hills page, right now, it's, uh, people have to submit if they want something posted. So that's, uh, Jody, Lori, or I that can approve somebody to post on there, and I think we're fine there. I think we're doing that, um, within the guidelines. And I don't usually approve those people, because, um, it's usually Lori, because she can look at the, make sure they have a water bill, make sure they're actually a resident. Um, we get a lot of people that are wanting to do air duct cleaning and stuff like that, that are trying to post on our official city page. So I don't see a problem there, um, and then I thought...
Can I, can I just pause there real quickly? So I did not think that we allowed outside comments on our official page.
Well, we are, we add, we allow comments, but we haven't allowed posting by them without it approved first. So we have had, where they submit it, it goes to the admin, they can see if it's a real, a real request, and then they can post it. They can approve it, and that will come posting. They can always comment, though, but if it then doesn't meet these standards, then the admins can hide it.
So we have had...
Not delete it, but hide it.
Cause I, when I, when I look at the page, I just don't recall ever seeing anything that is not coming from our city.
Usually comments don't, we don't, we just don't, on our official page.
We could add more than anything else.
Yeah, we usually don't approve comments on, because usually the types of things that we post on our official page are just events coming up, um, this road's going to be closed, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, but then we're in, but then I will share them over to the community page, and when I do that, that's when all the comments come in, and, and those, you know, we can't, we, we can't regulate, because that's not our page.
Well, and, and I mean, do we need to not post things on the community? Because I mean, if people are gonna look at the community page as the source of that information, I mean, we're sort of, I know, we're kind of training them by reposting our official...
I know, but we don't get hardly any traffic on our official page.
Well, what we could do...
We need a sexier page.
It's, it's a really poor way to communicate if we don't, if we don't share it.
Really hard to get them to come to the official page, um, for whatever reason, they just don't want to.
Put a link over there instead of an article.
But, um, I wanted to mention one thing, we have a third official page under your number one. It has our webpage and our Woodland Hills City Facebook page, but we also have our official fire Facebook page that is an official page as well. So we should add that on that, um, list. Uh-huh?
We do a little bit, but we, we're trying to do more. Uh, we've assigned a guy to u- update that occasionally.
Is Janet an administrator on there?
Uh, Michael Myers is the guy.
Could we add Janet as our IPO?
Definitely.
PIO.
PIO, whatever her acronym is.
Yeah, that one.
I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Some of my concern comes in, I mean, if we're, if we as council are posting on the community page...
Uh, this is my point I'm gonna bring up. So, I have a concern when, when, Carrie, when you're posting on the community page, it shows that you're an admin for the community page, you've got to remove that. That's gotta happen ASAP, because if you look at some of our recent posts and some of the recent accusations, and then you're posting, they're claiming that that's the official page, and we've censored them, and we've shut them down, and then you post a community event, and it has next to your name "admin," it's putting the city at risk, and I'm concerned about that.
Yes, and I haven't posted anything, I, I don't comment on any of those types of things.
I know, but, but every time, and I, it's not a, it's not a anything at you, I'm just saying that that's something that's gotta be...
And I never remove or add anyone, I never add or remove.
But it doesn't matter, because when you post this event, next to your name, it says "admin." And you, you are city council, so we've got, that's gotta change.
Well, and I, 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 I think that we might wanna seriously consider ways to, to teach our residents that...
Go to the city page, I think we should stop doing, I think we should stop sharing it so much, so that they have to come to our page.
I mean, I, I, I agree with that, I think that, I think that sharing it to the community page is, I mean, it, 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 it does seem, we, I mean, and we can talk more about this, but I, I do think that if we, if we continue to share things on that community page, I mean, I, I think that it, I mean, everyone will remain on that community page as the source for all official city business.
Or we ask, or we ask the admin on that community page to share it from our page, so it comes from them, not us.
Yeah, and that, and that's true, I mean, I don't want people to eat deprived, but that is the real dilemma, is that I think, and I think Brian, you've even said as much, that until recently, your assumption has been that the community page was the official page, and so, I mean, a good chunk of it is...
And of course, we have another page that has the exact same name as the community page, that's some, another resident.
Well, and I wondered if, um, I wondered if on the official page, if, if we should change, like, the picture? Maybe to like our city logo or something like that?
Something needs to change.
Something, I think we need to do something to that, to make it look more official official, or, I think we need to work on that. I don't know, it's, it's just hard, because if I'm, if I'm promoting the Maple Fest...
I know.
And I only put it on our page, nobody's gonna know.
Yeah, I know.
So, so I, I get it, and I agree with you, and yet, and so like the last thing that I shared, I, you know, I, I made a comment, you know, I'm sharing this from the city's official page.
Do you lead with that?
Yes, I did on one of them.
Maybe that's the key, is just to say, please see our official page for details.
Yeah, just put, just kind of put that, a one-liner, but not the whole post, so that they have to go back, and it just has the link. Or in your new, in the newsletter, put the link in the newsletter, I don't know.
But I did do that right after, right after all of those accusations were made, I said, "I am sharing this from the only," you know what I mean? The city's official page, to the community page.
Yeah, no, I, I...
Maybe having the, having Kirsten's the admin of the, um, of the, the community page, maybe having her look periodically, or you sending her a message, and she shares it to the community page, not you, and then it doesn't cross that boundary.
Well, then, then she'd have to have rights to our city.
No, she could just share, because it puts, there's a share button at the bottom.
And, and so, I mean, I, I think that though, before we bite off more than we need to necessarily chew, I mean, I think that, to your point, Janet, it, it is advisable to, for you to not be an admin on that community page, Carrie. And then I think that we need to also make sure that, uh, we're doing what we can to help people realize that...
I do have a question on number eleven. Um, I didn't draft this, who, where'd this come from?
It came from our city attorneys.
Okay, but it says that we, um, cannot use our personal social network accounts, that we have to have official ones. And I haven't done that.
That's such a...
No, it says, "When you're commenting on, in their official capacity on Woodland Hills..." Oh, okay, never mind, yeah.
And when we just went to, um, our meetings down in St. George, they said that by creating a second account, an official one, they just said that that can also be problematic, because, because then, if you're, so I'm gonna push back on this one, I guess, with our attorneys a little bit? Because they said that if you're using an, an official page, but it's you who's posting, you're, you're speaking for the city, and you're representing the city, and that could be problematic as well, cause it, it puts liability back to the city.
Right, cause if you're posting as a resident on the community page, you can use your personal one, but if you're posting on the official page, you're supposed to use the other one.
Yeah, they told me just to keep...
But they said just...
Cause I went up and talked to them and asked them, I said, "Okay, so like, you know, what?" And they said, "Just keep doing what you're doing, just be careful."
So, I, I, and I think that the point of this exercise is, I mean, this isn't necessar- cause there are some things that, um, I also had some just comments, so... I mean, we're not gonna be voting on this tonight, but I think that that is something that if you've got some proposed revisions, I, I think that we should...
I could reach out to them too, I could ask Carrie even who to reach out to that was, that did it that day, like get their contact, but I could reach out to them and ask them specific reasons maybe why this isn't a good idea, and send it back to our attorneys, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I, if, if there's a better practice that we should be following, then we should incorporate that.
Most of the cities that I've talked to and, uh, about this, um, cause I've been asking quite a few about what they do, and it seems to be a very living document, because social media changes so much. And there are things in the algorithms that, um, are not beneficial to government sites. And that's what keeps people not seeing it, even though they're a member of it. And so, um, there's, so there's, it's just really difficult, and then to keep up with it all the time, because it will probably be needed to, it will probably need to be revisited every year to update as social media changes, because right now, we only have a few things, but like number ten says, it's social media, networking, discussion groups, uh, social networking services, web feeds, blogs, wikis, photo sharing, podcasting, social bookmarking, mashups, which, I don't know if we do widgets, virtual worlds, microblogs, I mean, there's a lot in there that we don't even do, but it could potentially, if any of us were involved in any of those, would somebody come back and say, "Are you doing that as a city person?" Or, and I'm like, "Well, no, if I'm on a podcast, I'm not talking as a city council person."
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm, if I get interviewed for something, it's not because of my city council position.
So I, I'm thinking that as far as like, I mean, we could put this into a Google Doc, I mean, we wanna make sure that we, our attorneys are... our attorneys are part of the conversation too. I mean, we, we don't want.
We could do, cut, we could do a group email too.
Yeah, that, that might be.
And probably highlight and make comments and change.
This is probably just a standard form that they use with lots of cities.
Yeah, no, I.
I just kinda wondered like where it came from.
Actually, it came from, uh, one of the other attorneys in their, um, firm who works, who's actually a city council member on one of the other councils up north. Um, and it's what their council recently passed about a year ago.
And it's interesting, cause like I've posted, so on, um, number five, it says use of photographs. Uh, you'll not post photographs on social media sites without copyright or owner's permission to use. And then if it has a child in it, I've posted pictures of like Woodland Hills days before.
I was gonna ask you about that, yeah.
Um, with kids, you can't see their faces because they're in the crowd.
It, it calls that out though. I think it says that if it's in a group, it's okay, if I remember correctly. But copyrightable subject matter is.
Cause we're taking.
That's, that's the hard part. What a lot of cities pay for is a service, cause I did ask about that too. Is you can pay for a service that you run the pictures through that guaranteed that they've, that they're not copyrighted. Because even if they're just stock photos someplace and you can get them on the internet, um, they have now AI that is going through people's podcasts, people's newsletters, people's city pages, whatever. And they find you because you don't have that agreement beforehand. And so when they pay for these photo services, they're already supposed to be filtered and, and be able to use them.
I would say we shouldn't post any photos that we didn't take ourselves.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say 99.9% are photos we've taken ourselves. So I don't know really of any, I, I haven't ever used a stock photo. I don't.
Yeah, I, well, I can tell you, because this is my line of work, that you will get these photo licensing companies and they'll, they'll demand money from you and it's not, uh, uh.
But it's something to be aware of.
So we should, we shouldn't post any third party pictures on our site.
Sniffery eyes that just crawl the webs.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I'll, I'll pull down a picture of a flower or like a little drawing of a flower.
But even those things can be.
Yeah, I'd be careful cause they, they could hit us if it's a registered copyright. They could hit us with a claim for statutory damages, which is, it can be thousands of dollars, um, just for a single instance, so.
Yeah, so that's why you have to really be, make sure that it's from a free site or, or that we've paid for a service.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a license from a reputable site, I guess you could do it, but, uh, I, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I would definitely not just grab pictures from, uh, you know, different websites. I mean, even, even stock photos, I, I would, I wouldn't do it unless it was a, a, a well-known because I've, I've worked for website or companies where they had a website designed by a professional and that professional used photographs that they were permitted to use. And, and, and the owner of the website is the one that gets hit with the penalties. So we just, if we don't take it, let's not use it. I, I would say that should be our policy.
Yep.
Um, but so.
And if we have a kid to face at Woodland Hills Day, then I think we just have a waiver that the parent can sign. Is it okay if we use this in the newsletter or on our social media? Because we did that all the time at Christmas. Hope here's Santa coming and we're videotaping and it shows all the kids.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, all the, all the events and all the pictures of the kids.
But again, I think that it allows for.
It does call it, the mayor's right, it does call it out and says, um, permissions are not needed to photographs of multiple children taken at a public event. Um, that's right in there on, uh, 5B.
All right, well, so why don't we, if, if, if you wanna put together an email with the Senate and copy Craig and Ethan and then add any revisions and then just invite feedback from everybody.
Yep.
That, uh, and then.
Do we wanna do it all first and then send it to Craig and Ethan?
Yeah, Craig and Ethan.
Or, cause will they bill us for?
I mean, they're, they're gonna bill us for their review, but I mean, it's, it's something.
Let's not put them in first. Let's get the, our part done first and then.
Except I think that it is advisable to make it, cause I mean, the, the, we don't want, uh, we don't wanna waive attorney client privilege.
We're not gonna change that much anyway. We've already, most of it's fine.
Yeah.
And you can just say at this time, we're still working through it. We'll let you know when the final copy is, but here, you know, we're.
I get what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna be proposing something and spending a lot of time on something that they're gonna come back and go, well, that's not legal. Like you can't do that.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna spin my wheels.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I just, if, if you wanna make clear that this is a working document and then, you know, we, we, we don't want their review yet, but after all the final comments are included then.
I just think, um, I just, you know, Ben and I were talking about it and he's actually the one that suggested we revisit it, but just in the current climate that we have, I think we've gotta have a good policy in place to protect us in case somebody does try to sue the city for something.
Yeah, no, it's best practice, I, I think. And, and just to make sure that, you know, we're, we're complying with even just the rules that governments and elected officials have to comply with.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item six, relocation of sirens. Ted and Doral.
Yay, this is good news.
Yay. We've needed some good news.
Wait, what was bad news?
We. Social media.
It's bad news.
That is bad news.
Ever respect, probably.
That's why a lot of cities hire just one person just to manage social media because there's so much complications and changes.
Yeah, we're relocating sirens. Anything else? No, we, uh.
Just like that opening sentence said.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, just quick up, you know, so I met with, uh, Andy Tanner, who's the guy that's relocating our sirens for us. We, we came up with kind of a location, cause we have to install a tower, a radio tower, antenna, then send radio signals from the, from, to and from the sirens and the base unit will be here. We talked about putting the base unit in where our like SCADA and camera computers are, uh, so it's kind of housed in there with that electronic equipment. The tower, probably the best location for it, um, would be right outside this Jody's window. So she gets to look out the window right at this big tower all day. And she said, that's great. She loves it. Yeah, we're gonna throw, we're gonna paint it and. No, it's gonna go, uh, kind of, but.
How tall is it?
Uh, 30 feet. But the only place that it would really have, the antenna could get installed to be able to reach over the building, to reach all the sirens, was right up here, kind of off this front corner in our lawn area. Uh, so it won't be in front of the window, but close enough she can walk over to the window and look out at it whenever she gets.
And we'll make it look like a fake pine tree?
Make it look like a fake sure.
Yeah, that's a good look.
Yeah. Uh, it'll be about seven or eight feet off the building. Um, so he's probably gonna start, uh, here in the next few weeks, getting the foundation port for the tower. He just texted today and said the tower has now been delivered. He had all the rest of the equipment here. He was just waiting on the tower and the tower's now been delivered. So he's gonna call to start coordinating at a time to get this installed, so. Making progress. Hopefully we have some sirens here soon.
What, what's our timeline for that, do you think?
Um.
That we can test again?
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing, I, I mean, safely a month or so.
The newsletter says sometime this year.
Yeah.
Or maybe, maybe July.
2024.
Right.
July or August, with the hoping.
So.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Does he do cameras as well? Cause then I'm concerned.
The thing, the thing I was gonna. Thing I was gonna try.
Two or three or five years, you're saying?
I was gonna try and arrange with Ted that we do send out an Everbridge before we start testing too much, you know, once it's up and running. Be aware of that. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best to not send some surprises, you know, like evacuate now or something like that, so.
Right, well, I mean, that's a pretty good stress test, right?
Be a good test, yeah. So we'll have to remember to somehow do that with a little lead time, maybe two or three hours, maybe, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, last time we had a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they, I think residents are probably not getting used to not hearing sirens now, so if we didn't send them some warning before we test again, they may panic.
Yeah, I think a warning would be good.
I'll never forget when I first moved in, my first, first of the month Saturday and my husband was like in Vegas or somewhere, like I was just still unpacking. And nobody told me. And all the sirens went off and I, I was calling my kids, the sirens are going off. Oh my goodness. And I was packing the cars. I was packing up the cars and then I was like, wait. Cause I looked and none of my neighbors were fleeing. They were all just in their house. And I was like, something's going on.
Watching you though out the window.
Yeah, yeah, new person.
Yep.
So I started calling my neighbors, why are the sirens going off?
Get in the bathtub.
They said, oh, that's a test. But I didn't know. I, as a new resident, I didn't know.
Do residents know when, when, once we start again, new people, when they sign up?
We can send out an Everbridge or whatever.
Well, I meant just when they sign up for water and et cetera, do we say, oh, by the way, just so you know, we test the sirens?
No, but we should, cause I never got told.
I just want.
You guys are taking all the fun out of this.
It goes over the head. It says, this is a test. I really want it to be Ted's voice.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's hear. How would you say it?
This is a test.
I'll, well, I'll work on my sing, we'll sing it out.
The red man, I said, I don't think we get to change our announcements either. I think it's still, that's still a problem. If I understand it right. I think it all goes to the old recordings, don't you?
Good question. I'm not sure, um, if we can change them or.
Those were very expensive to change at one time. Maybe this'll change it. I don't know.
Yeah, this new, it's a whole new base unit, uh, updated, so. Gosh, we may be able to, I think you can speak in them and do your own messages, but.
Oh, that, yeah, true. If you know how to talk.
That would be nice.
Well, that's a great update though. I'm glad that, uh, we're getting that, uh, all set.
Doral agreed to sing the messages this time. With, he's gonna play the clarinet while I sing it.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Let's do it. Or at least the cheer.
Yeah, but I appreciate Ted working on this so much. We're, we're making progress.
Yeah, no, that's great. Okay, anything else? Thanks to both of you.
And all the sirens will be in the same location they have been.
Yeah.
And none of the sirens are moving. None of them, we're not adding, we're just, they're updating, all the radios are updating on the sirens.
Good. Thanks.
Somebody has to climb those poles.
Yeah.
I don't know, not, probably Ted.
Oh, that's Zach's job, isn't it?
Yeah. Send Zach up there.
And Jody's making a face.
All right, well, we can move on to item seven then. Uh, we've got some, uh, large purchases that, uh,
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's you.
Wait a minute, I see a trend here. Every time you come to city council, you're asking for money.
Well, did you hear Chris report in the last one, how we've been saving all this money, but wait?
Now the wait's over.
Over. Now we can spend it. So, um, so lease, this lease for a loader, so we've been doing all our due diligence, um, as we've talked about several times, uh, we're interested in getting a compact loader. We found one we really liked that can be used for multiple purposes, uh, salt loading. Um, we can use it throughout the city just for hauling stuff or rubber tires that we can run around. Also, we've got a quote to get a snow blower attachment for it that we can then also blow snow in cul-de-sacs, fire hydrants and places we can't get with our big plows. So Ben's getting excited. He wants to run this. This is his, this is what he's signing up for.
See some hydrants fly by.
Yeah, I know. I, I'd be curious to know if they can launch a hydrant.
It's, it's gonna throw trash can.
Shoots big enough for that, huh?
This would be a, this would be a good snow blower if we can mulch a trash can.
Yeah.
So this is a lease, so it'd be a new.
So this is a lease, so we found, we found one we liked and we went through a couple of different leasing options with the, one with the company that supplies it. Then another one who we already did the resolution with last time when we bought the chief truck, Unified Fleet Services, also gave us a lease option. Uh, in, in reviewing with Chris, and he may have some specific numbers, I we felt like the better lease option was through Unified Fleet Services. So in a sense, in a sense, they buy it and then they lease it back to us. Um, it's a three-year lease, um, is what they would agree to lease it to us for. And I, Chris, was it 14?
A little more net, sorry, let me grab it here.
16,000, something like that, 14, 16,000?
Yeah, it's, it's less upfront for the lease with, with United, where, um, arms up to some of the other leasing companies, we've looked at their cost. We were paying more, but at the end it was less to buy it out, but that's not our goal is to buy the machine. We're just basically borrowing it when I turn it back in and get another one in three years.
Three years, 16,000 a year.
Ish. I'll have to look that exact number up and I apologize, I didn't bring it with me. Um, it's on my computer right back here if I can go get it, but.
And they do the repairs and all of that is part of the lease.
We, we, we haven't talked about a maintenance package with them. That's just the lease. That's not a maintenance package. It's slightly more than we have for our skidster or pay for our skidster right now, but I think we'll have some more flexibility with this. It's kind of replacing. It can replace the skidster. The idea is that we can still hang on to that for a little while and try them both before we have to turn the skidster back in or sell it or buy it and sell it, whatever we've talked about, but. Um, so we have a chance to kind of use them both and, and, and see how it goes and then, uh, then we can, this will kind of do multiple functions, so. Um, it's kind of working as a re, semi-replacement for a little bit of what Big O was doing, plus some additional capabilities, plus long salt, whatever we wanna do.
I think that'd be great.
So this is the one, less dangerous.
Maybe, I don't know.
They call it a. So you not only go up and down, but you can go out with it. So when you're stacking. L up it, you can.
Ted, I think your mic's dying.
Oh.
Or, or Brian, is it just me?
Might be me, um.
So I got the prices here, so.
It was, it was happening with Kirsten too, so.
Okay. So we got three payment options. It's just how much equity we want in the end. I would say we should take the lowest one, which is just, it'll be shy $10,000. So it's, it's about the same price what we have this kid loader for right now.
Yeah.
We'd have an optional buyout at the end as well?
Yes, and, and let's not forget the skid loader before we, we still need to discuss that here too, but uh, we do have the option to purchase this tractor at the end for a pre-negotiated price.
So I think the idea with tonight was, uh, I think we've, as you remember, last council meeting, we came back and said we, we'd come back with some lease options and some numbers. I think we've kind of vetted that out. We would like to be able to get the, the, you know, authorization to move forward with Unified Fleet Services to lease this equipment through because they'll have to get it ordered and it's gonna take some time to get and we just wanna get the ball rolling and, uh, get them going on.
And at this point, it would just be the, the, this compact loader that it doesn't, wouldn't come with the other additional equipment that you.
Correct.
We would have to lease that or buy that outright.
So I think we'll, we'll end up buying that outright, the snow blower. Um, that's, that's what they suggested rather than leasing it because you don't get a lot of value out of leasing those, um, and in talking with them, they're not, I mean, you can get a lease, get it bought into the lease with it, but they suggested just buying that one outright and having it for us. And it's not, I mean, it's, I think it was 14,000 for the snow blower attachment. And, you know, we've sold Big O and sold multiple trucks. I think we've, we've built some cash reserves to, to replace some of that equipment, so. I would suggest you buy that, so.
And how long would it take to, when you, once you order that to get it? Would it be here by fall?
Don't, don't know. That's why we wanna get it rolling, cause until we order it, they won't give us a lead time.
Okay, so once you lease this, you'll order the other at the same time, basically?
Basically, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we're not caught with a new piece of equipment that we can't really use it to, uh, to the capacity we want it to.
Right.
But the loader does have independent value irrespective of the snow blower, right? I mean, so it's, uh, but I agree with you. I, I think that we should get the snow blower too, but, uh, but it's not the only thing that makes it.
Yeah.
Right. So that's really what we'd like tonight is just to buy into, to get this going and get the ball rolling so we can get it ordered and get the equipment coming. Wanna make sure it's not showing up next spring. We'd like to try it out this winter.
Well, that's when the snow's the heaviest.
Yeah.
Kind of like last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the loader and then ultimately we'll, we'll, we'll keep probably the skidster for a little bit, but then we'll come back and we'll talk about, uh, whether we, we, you know, buy and sell that or turn it over to the lease or whatever. I think right now, um, like we talked about last time, the value of that skidster is worth it for us to buy it and then, and then, and maybe Chris, maybe that's something we wanna talk about now. I'll let you decide whether we talk about that discussion now to, to buy it and then we keep it for a little bit and then sell it, cause the value of that thing is pretty, pretty high right now. It's, the value's more than what we owe on it, so we could buy.
I recommend this. The council spends the $36,000 to just buy out that, I think it's 36, $38,000. Uh, Kat said they would gladly take it back, cause they're gonna turn around and sell it for a minimum of $51,000.
Yeah, we might as well do it.
Yeah, we've got the budget this year, um, because we haven't done a lot of the road stuff, so I would recommend that you guys, let's get it.
Except we don't have that on the agenda, so I don't know that we can approve that tonight, but I have a little teaser for you, so the.
For next, yeah. But tonight, more about the loader getting the lease, but yeah, what Chris said, I think that's worth.
I agree.
Add that to the agenda.
Yep, I know, that's, well, and we're gonna keep it for a while irrespective, right? I mean, so we're, we're keeping the, the skidster.
Yeah, for a little while.
Yeah, so we'll have them both and, and that's already locked in and we're already paying for it and it's already budgeted and so forth, so it's not as though that's necessarily, that this decision is not necessarily an urgent one as to whether we buy it and sell it, right? I mean, this, I'm not saying we wanna stall it.
Before July 1 would be good, so we've got time.
Okay. So sometime before July 1, we gotta make that call.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. Um. EMS emergency radios, yeah, and, and thank you to the council for getting that and mayor for getting that handled fairly quickly. What happened there is, is central dispatch is updating our radio system. And because of that, we all have to update our radios. When we went down there to go through, there's two updates that are gonna happen. The first one was last week and, yeah. And when we went down there to get our radios updated, they basically said, there's nothing we can do with, we have some older radios and newer radios. Some of the newer radios came with our newer equipment, like our new fire truck, our new brush truck. They both have the newer radios in them. And we had some new handhelds, and then the chief truck has one of the newer radios, but the other equipment has older radios in them. When we went down there to get them updated, they said we can't update all these older radios. They could update our newer, but which is four of our apparatuses have the older ones in them, our ambulance, our heavy brush, our older brush truck. And our engine one ninety-two all have the older radios in them, so they couldn't even update those. We had eight handhelds that they couldn't update. And they said you'll be okay until October, and then these radios will no longer work once we go through the second update. And we, we were kind of in a panic because these radios are six months out to get. And we just happened, when we were talking about this, Chief Hells with Spanish Four, he was standing there, said, I've got four apparatus radios. That are just extras that we are not gonna do anything with, the newer ones. If you want them, I'll sell them to you for my cost, and that's when we said this would be great, because we're not probably gonna have them by October. And he, he went and got his cost and it's actually cheaper than, quote, I had to get some two months ago, so I'm like. Probably they buy them a lot bigger bulk than we do and a lot bigger customer, so. I thought this was a great time to take advantage of getting some radios that we can get here in time to get in our apparatus and at a little less cost, so.
So you already have the, they're already updated?
They're here, they're already programmed and they're sitting in my office, and then once Craig, I talked to Craig. Who does a lot of our maintenance on our vehicles, he's gonna be servicing our emergency vehicles, and as he services those, he said he'll work on the radios.
Oh, it's four radios, thirty thousand?
Four radios, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Just, it was eleven thousand nine hundred for four apparatus. I still have eight handhelds that need to be replaced. So I've got to work on that, because we're about six months out getting radios, so. We've got four on the way, but there's eight more that we need to replace, so I'm gonna work on figuring out. Maybe, maybe it's getting those ordered. I'll get back, but maybe it's getting those ordered now, because we wouldn't actually have to pay for them until next budget year. If that makes, because they're not gonna be here for four or five months. So, anyway, that was the radio thing, so just need to ratify that purchase, I guess.
Great, thank you. And then rollers.
Roller, oh, so, yeah, we were going through, down through there, just going through stuff. Zach's been helping kind of organize and get some of the public works area cleaned up and. And we were going through things last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was, and we have three compacters down there. One is a large roller one, one is a jumping jack and one's a plate roller. As I was talking to Zach about it, I was asking how often they use the roller one, do you, do you think it's something we'll, we'll use a lot of? And Zach says he's never used it. He always used the plate compactor or jumping jack. When they did use it, I guess, it was when they used to pour some of the road base along the road edges. To kind of fill in some of the holes that are created, they would compact it with that roller, is when they used it. Probably once, maybe a year, if, if that, it got used, if even that, and. It took some, you know, some pretty heavy equipment trailers to haul it and stuff like that, so. The thought is, you know, if we have repairs work done like that, likely we're gonna have someone helping us with it, you know, bringing in a contractor or something like that, so no reason to hang on to the. Roller compactor, because we've still got a plate and a jumping jack that we can use if we need compaction, so. Thought was, let's just sell it and get some space down there, because we're, we're trying to create more space.
How much is it worth?
Brian, Brian looked it up. I think it's worth, well, it was brand new, they were like thirty-eight hundred or something and.
Correct, they're thirty-eight brand new.
And they're going for, I think Joey found some on for less than a thousand or something like that, so. I think maybe we thought if we put a, like a thousand dollars on it as a minimum or something like that, and then if it goes for that, great, or a little higher, great. If it's less than that, then we'll have to make a decision whether it's worth selling. It works. It works.
Yeah, I, I got it running, so I.
I'm just looking at construction projects near us.
Yeah.
Because it fell under the mayor's purview and I got a go-ahead from that, I went ahead and put it up and we're already at a thousand dollars and we, we're not even a weekend to the auction yet, so. We're doing good already, so we've met our reserve on that, so it's definitely gonna sell. We just see what it's gonna end up selling for. Hopefully, hopefully it goes, goes up towards the end, like most of them do, and we, we get a good, good price out of it.
So let Mila know. Yeah, this one was more informational, so this, this one we've already pulled the trigger on.
But he does want to, he wants something else that now he sees what's on our agenda, what we're buying. He's always like, Carrie, I think we need, I think we need. I'm like, no, we don't.
All right, any other questions for Ted on those items or Chris? Okay, thank you. Item eight, A, mag cog and SESD. I went to the meetings, nothing, the only thing that stood out to me with respect to bring up here is. At the mag meeting, they had someone that is responsible for the Explore Utah Valley website. You've seen that? I, I've seen it, I think, in passing, but I've never paid close attention to it, but it, it actually seems like a really good vehicle. I mean. I was thinking Maple Festival, but I mean, it basically is events, so Janet, I'm looking at you. It's something that you might want to consider taking a look at, just to see if we can use it as a platform for anything that we want to.
Or if we see something on there that's close by that we want to put in our newsletter to say.
So it's mag website?
No, 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 it's Explore Utah Valley.
Okay.
It's just a calendaring, a countywide calendaring, calendaring website for events.
And it's a really nice website, I think. I think they do a good job and, and I, you know, if they can, it seems like they have quite a bit of traffic that they can. Get there, and so I think that we could probably get, you know, visibility is not always a good thing, but if we wanted some visibility for some of the things that we're trying to get out.
I don't know that we'd want it for Woodland Hills days, because.
No, I don't think we want to serve hot dogs to all of Utah County.
I know, that's, that's my worry. I would love to have it be huge. That would be fun.
Yeah.
And, but, because we'd have to change how we did things.
But, but for all events, I think that it's at least a tool that you might find useful, so I just wanted to mention that.
And, you know, something like the Fire Expo might even be, just to get more foot traffic.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think so.
Okay.
But that's the only thing I had. Council member Hilliard?
Yeah, do you have anything from SESD?
Nothing to report, nothing that comes to mind.
New transfer stations up and running. I've been by three times now. Ditching stuff and then, you know, signing checks.
I took my old oven there and so I've actually dumped a large appliance almost on my foot.
Good, we prefer that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was a little concerned I might crack the concrete flooring with this thing. It, it sure felt heavy, but it was probably a hundred pounds or something. I'm just getting old and weak, but.
So how did it go?
Great. It was, it was really slick. I, I.
Perfect.
I enjoyed every, well, I especially enjoyed getting rid of it. I didn't enjoy loading it so much, but.
My favorite part of the transfer station's leaving.
Yeah.
Because all my stuff's back there and I'm out of it, no. Things are going quite well. They've obviously had some, you know, hiccups here and there with just getting the new processes in place, but for the most part, everything's going really, really well. Staff is far happier, except for the people at the door, because the new misters in the building apparently make it quite cold. So I recommended that we build them little shacks for the winter with some radiant heat in there, so that they don't completely freeze with the mist during the winter. But really, it's, it's going well. The separation from commercial and residential has helped a lot. And it's filling up. They're, they're using it. It's, things are going pretty well, so. Some of the truckers are really jerks, but eh, sometimes we need to make sure that the world's still going as it's supposed to. So, no, everything's going really well there and that's my only.
Is the fee based on just one load, or is it for, like, if you had two appliances, would you have to pay for two, or is it still just by the load?
No, so every single, so if it's just a normal debris load, then everything's just as normal, right? If it's just in a pickup truck, for instance, you just pay a ten dollar load fee.
Right.
If it's a trailer and a pickup, then they're going to weigh you and they'll assess you per your tonnage.
Okay.
If it's, you've got tires, you'll be billed per tire. If you've got an appliance, potentially, did they bill you extra for an appliance? They may not have.
You just hand it in the card.
You probably just put it in there in the metal, right?
I'm, I'm happy.
Yeah, for me, I was already celebrating, so there was no object.
But if you're bringing. TVs have an extra charge, some mattresses do.
Yeah.
But they'll ask you when you pull up, what you have, and just say you've got normal stuff and whatever.
For the most part, it's the, it's the same charges.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so one, one.
We don't have any green, yeah, we don't have any green waste entity. That was a, a loss. It wasn't a lost leader, it was just a loss, so we ended the green waste side of things.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Ben. Brian?
Suma. Okay, so Suma, I don't know if they actually got a, a quorum. They, it didn't look like they were gonna get one. They still are not set up on Zoom, so I was unable to attend. It was on Monday. So I don't have anything to report on them again. But on, I did attend Monday's meeting with Mount Nebo Water. And there was actually quite a bit of information, and, and a bit of this is gonna concern Ted. So they've been working on putting together a plan. I don't know how many of you guys know this, what David had explained. So they've been putting together a, and funded a groundwater management plan model. And kind of putting the, the scope of this whole thing together over the last year or so. And what it does is it monitors the groundwater that all the cities are using and all the big agricultural. Farmers are using as well and modeling our. Our aquifers, and so they can start watching for when we're using more than we're, than what's coming in and when we're using less than what's coming in, so they can, they can actually plan this. And what this is, is it's a voluntary plan that they put together. They started this a, a long time ago, putting this on, on just spreadsheets and even the. Northern Utah County started doing it because they liked what we were doing so much, and it's spreading throughout the state, so now they're putting this big plan together. Where the cities will submit monthly instead of annually, like they currently do to the state, their usage. And then they have a consultant that goes through in December, and, and this is all modeled so it can be looked at in, in kind of real time. The agricultural users will still continue to do it yearly, but that in December, the consultant reviews it, puts everything together, takes it to a tech committee in March. And then the second week of May, it's brought to the board for approval on whether we need to, whether we can use more water out of our aquifers, or whether we need to save more water out of our aquifers. And. This one, you know, it, it, it's, what it's to do is to prevent. Us from getting mandates from the state, because the state will come in if we're using too much, and they determine that we're using too much. And they'll come in and start, start putting, you know, start rationing water and cutting it down, so it's wanting to get it, we're wanting to get ahead of everything. Now, there is costs involved in this. First year to actually get this whole model set up and, and running, about thirty-two thousand dollars and then twenty-four thousand. Every additional year for the consultants and, and everything that it has to go through and then the software. Again, it's split up between the Mount Nebo group, and it would be using the current separation. Or the, the current distribution of, of that, so we'd have a, a certain percentage. It is going to a public hearing on June tenth at our next meeting. So if anybody is interested in that, you can attend that public hearing. Again, our budget will be going into that as well. And the proposed budget that's been put together. A couple other things, they, they were actually brought up, was a few items of legislation. That came through, some, some of the big hitters were House Bill two eighty that actually. Instead of enforce, instead of turning into this, legislation manages the prioritization of water and where it goes, they turned it into a study. That didn't make it through, so they've actually turned it into a study, and they're wanting to impose a fee on water usage. From a state level. Senate Bill eighteen on the first substitute is gonna allow. To quantify saved water, so if, if an agriculture, especially an agricultural. User is, is not using all its water, but maybe even, I don't know about the cities, I don't think that's gonna work the way the cities work, but if an agricultural. User doesn't use all his water and is actually trying to save it, being conservative, it's gonna allow them to quantify that and actually be able to lease it out or even sell it. And then House Bill four fifty is targeting the, the mining industry on the Great Salt Lake. They're not using all the water rights that they have, the mining consortiums that we've got out there. And they are trying to force those mining organizations to look at their big plans, look at all the lithium mining and stuff like that, and then returning that water. To the Great Salt Lake, so that water's actually going in, into the lake, because they're not using it anymore, they're, they're not actually using it, so. We talked a little bit in our, in our public works committee about the, the water rights that we have and, and. Not using the water rights can cause forfeiture, and this is one of the things they're trying to do to help gain some ground on the Great Salt Lake, so. That's all I've got to report from Mount Nebo.
All right, thank you. Very interesting. Doral, Central Utah nine one one?
Yeah, I've got the best to report on. We, it just so happens Ted and I went down to dispatch today and. He had obtained three or four of these, like, water jugs like that on your desk and had them engraved with Woodland Hills on them, and they were asking for. Things like that from all of the departments in the county that they can give away as gifts to their dispatchers. I guess they have a, an event quarterly or something and they give a gift, you know, to one of the, one of the dispatchers, but. So that was really good to go in there and see them face to face again, and I, I did have a meeting with them last Thursday. And it was one of the most interesting meetings I've ever attended with nine one one. Just to learn and see their side of events is, is an eye-opener for me, so. Their management over the years has really changed. I, I knew the old management from fifteen years ago when. They just had a whole different leadership style, and the new leaders that are there, I call them new, because they're younger than me, so. They, they have this, you have this feeling around when you're dealing with the management of our nine one one dispatchers, that they care a lot. About their employees, and they do everything they can to, to help them mentally and to help them. You know, succeed and, and feel good about their jobs and so on, so. We've been, every month, we've been going through different policies and they're, they're changing details within each policy that need to be changed and. And it's going really well and making good progress, and so we did all of that Thursday in our meeting, then at the end of it, she says. Well, we've had a hard week. Everybody goes silent, you know, due to this, due to this officer in Santa Claus. And, and it turns out that the dispatcher that was involved in calling that. Paging that police officer to, to go to that scene, she feels personally responsible. For the outcome of that, and oh, it's just hard for, for them to deal, so. So they've, they've gone to a lot of work and, and, and counseling to help with that. Not only that, they, that event happened right during a change of shift. And so it affected two shifts at, at dispatch, so.
Doral, not, not only that, I met with one of the dispatchers and they actually have had people calling in. And complaining about the freeway being shut down. and they actually have had people calling in and complaining about the freeway being shut down.
Yes, I know.
And being angry and people said, they're, they're yelling at the dispatchers and saying, are you gonna do that for me when I die? And getting really angry and being really ignorant. So not only are they dealing with all of that, but they're also having people calling in and complaining.
Imagine how, how unfun that would be. That's, that's awful.
Yep.
Um, and they didn't mention that at our thing, but, but the funeral. The funeral was just yesterday and so they're just trying to, trying to get back into feeling the way they need to feel to help us out. But, but one of the police officers heard the remark from this dispatcher that felt personally responsible. And he says, don't feel that way. He says, we're, we're even more dedicated to go when you call us. So don't feel that way. So I thought that was a pretty good response, you know, from, from an officer that's out there and, and, you know, all of them are like that. They're, uh, following up on that. So at least within our own troops, it's, it's hugely supportive. And so they're, uh, they're, they're, uh, you know, they're just doing, and then we feel the same way that, uh, um, they just are doing a great job down there, getting us to go to the events that we, we think we can help with. And that's, that's what they'll keep doing. But
I think you just love too, the reaction countywide of the law enforcement community taking those shifts and, and all of the people who were there at the funeral yesterday. It was just so overwhelming to see.
Yeah.
People were from Idaho, from, um, all other states came and, and lined that procession there and um, just really, it wa- it was something to be seen and
Can I maybe suggest?
A lot, and yet we don't always, we think of it as a budget thing and we don't always necessarily see. You know, when they're called and, and what I told somebody who was complaining to me about this, that freeway shut down and are they gonna do that when they die? I said, do you put your life on the line every day for us? You know, every day, not knowing. And, and I think that's something to, um, to really think about in terms of how we, we hope our citizens feel about our law enforcement and our fire department and why, why we elevate and hold them in a, in a, in a way that deserves it.
Can I just suggest too, that if you guys see our Sergeant Dudson, I don't know if you guys know, but he was over that procession yesterday.
Yeah.
And he was also over the IC, the command center that was set up for it and all that kind of stuff. He came in today and he just looked exhausted. But, um, but thank him for what he's done. He did a lot with that.
Right now. Yeah.
He, uh, he would appreciate hearing from you. Yeah. So anyway.
It was, it was, uh, it was hard to not just get teary eyed seeing them go by.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, even today, when we went down there, Doral was just thanking Heidi, who's over nine-one-one dispatch down there and uh, just in his, uh, thankfulness to her, brought her to tears, just kind of right there where we were talking to her. So it's, it's an emotional time, but.
Her emotions are pretty fragile down there. So, and will be for a while, but anyway.
And then even the two mayors, you know, both, both. And, and Mason mayors who, you know, this is their friend, their colleague, the person, you know, someone, it was really rough on on the cities as well.
If you watched KSL the first day that it happened, you saw Brad James, Chief James from Salem right there with his arm around that Santaquin chief. That was good to see. I texted him and just thanked him and, and he even responded. It's just, it's just good to see the community support. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks, Doral. Janet?
I got nothing.
That was easy.
Just, uh, you know, just community service. Brian's gonna talk to PTR. Just need that for Woodland Hills Days. And, um, if you know anyone, I still don't have, I have a couple names, but, um, I still don't have. I mean, I usually have them by the end of this month, so I still have a week or so, but I need chair people for Woodland Hills Days. And I just, nobody is coming, like, nobody is just, the last two years, I, I immediately known who it should be. And this year, I'm kind of drawing a blank. So.
That's when you go back to the bottom of the list and recycle.
Yeah. I'm thinking Wayne Franzen would be good at it.
He's got nothing going on. All right. Well, thank you. Um, no, no names are coming to mind right now, but, uh.
I put something out there to, to our neighborhood. I'll put something out there.
Okay. Brian had somebody and she said no.
I wonder if you posted.
I did. I have a couple times.
And nobody's.
Nobody. Nobody, it's hard, um, it's a lot and people, it's overwhelming and people don't, we're all, people are busy and people are working two jobs and it's a lot to take it on. And their family and their hu- home and they're trying to get their garden in and, you know.
Ball games and, you know, there's just a lot going on in the summer that.
Most of us have pretty full plates and it's hard to take that on. So. I really appreciate when people are willing to.
Thanks for your efforts.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get it.
And I don't know if it'd ever be in our budget, but a, a lot of the cities do hi- a lot of the smaller cities, because I've been asking some of the smaller cities, and there are, um, companies who come in and will organize small city events.
Yeah.
And so we might consider that in the future. They do the kind of heavy lifting and then we still have some volunteers to do the little things, but, um, they can coordinate it. And uh, several cities, smaller cities have told us that they went to that because their pool of volunteers is small. And I said, that's exactly what we have. You know, a small pool and that, that's what they specialize in is small city events.
Yeah, well, it'd be interesting to see what the cost of or something like that, because that might be the way we, we do end up going if, uh, we can't field a team.
I just got a name.
Oh, a free one? Perfect. All right. Anything more of you? I have nothing?
I promise, I'm done.
Okay, thanks. Carrie?
I have a big one. Um, animal shelter was budget. It's budget time. And although we only had twenty animals last year, our budget, uh, is going up not quite double. It was, Chris, I don't know if you're on, but our assessment for next year will just, just be over, um, three thousand.
Uh, it's all. Pick myself up off the floor, sorry.
Yep, it's just, so, so I will, I will send you that, what our assessment will be. Um, it's based on the number of animals that are brought in from Woodland Hills. Um, if they have a license, then we get some credit back for those. But for all the ones who come in without license or without IDs, we're charged the full amount. Um, most of the, um, law enforcement that sit on the committee, um, said that licenses also have, you know, it has a number. They have an ability to just look it up. Oh, it belongs to that house over there. They take it home. Then there's no charge to the city. But if it doesn't have a license, they have to take it to the shelter. And that's when we get charged. So although we only had twenty pets brought in last year, that didn't have, and once they go to the shelter for, even if they have a tag or not, like a neighbor brings it in, um, we're charged. And so it's going to be three, just over three thousand for those twenty that we had this year. Um, that pays for all of the services there. Um.
Talk about going to the, the Goshen method?
Um, I, we just talked about, okay, so the, I'm, you know, really trying to do an educational piece of trying to make sure that our, um. I kind of skipped over that, Chris.
Yeah, we're trying to ignore one of us here.
So, um, you know, that.
It wasn't me this time. Hey.
Have an educational piece of, there's all the resi- all the registration and licensing can be done online if the rabies shot is current. Um, also, um, Santaquin, their ordinance requires they have to have the tag on the collar. And that's part of their ordinance, um, so that if an animal is picked up, that it's actually, um, the officer knows where it goes to. Um, and so we might want to consider that. They've also talked about the cities maybe adding, instead of just dogs have license, dogs and, and add the word and cats, um, which is difficult, but the shelter gets, um, almost double the amount of cats as they get dogs. But the dogs, because they're the only ones that are licensed, are paying for all the services. And so they said, even if only, um, a quarter of the do- cats come in with a license, at least it pays for some of the services, because they automatically have to do, um, the, the fees, the vaccination, the licensing, the spay and neuter and the microchip. Those are all things that they have to do at the shelter when somebody comes in. Um, we talked about, um, let's see, let, let me see. The, um, it's a public health issue. I don't know if you realize, but feral cats are, um, the, um, national um, invasive species list, because it's such a public health risk um, to pregnant women, to livestock, to others. And, but they get a, they get nearly well, between six and eight hundred feral cats a year that they have to, uh, do all this stuff to by law. And, um, so they also talked about maybe adding in that public health, um, component to our city ordinances. So people don't just have a litter of cats and then let them run out in the woods because they think they'll be better off. Because then if one of those feral cats is picked up and brought to the sho- shelter and they said, where'd you pick this up? I picked it up on Highline Drive. Um, then, that, that adds into our three thousand dollars a year. So it's really important. Um, we have, don't have clinics up here anymore because we didn't have enough people. But they are having a clinic this Saturday at the shelter, drive-through clinic from ten to twelve um, for our residents to go to. Um, they can also ask their.
Can you post that? And after you take admin off your name?
Um, the, so they want us to consider adding cat to our ordinance on licensing dog and cat. And then they want us to, um, consider doing a little bit more, uh, maybe in a newsletter or something, education on why you should get your dogs and cats licensed. Because what people, what the law enforcement are saying is, people are saying, well, my cat and dog stay inside or they only go to my yard. And yet, if for whatever reason they get out and then we get charged for it, I think that's what people don't realize is how much we have to pay.
Well, eighty percent of the posts on the community page are, are the same dog. No, it's the same one dog. I wish the owners would take responsibility.
Could they change their ordinance? That says like a strike system, you know, same dog comes back so many times that.
They have to go by state law.
It gets Kristi Noem'd.
Well, and one of the things that they're talking about is, is that there are, we, our city has not had it yet, but all the other cities, there's, there's some people going around who want, um, an, a no-kill centers, right? And they're going to every city and trying to get the, the buy-in. But the problem comes is if an animal is diseased and coming in or a feral cat, for instance, the amount of money you have to spend for a cat that would probably only live another year is too much. And on the catch and release that they have, I catch it in front of your house, they document where it is, they take it, they fix it, they divvy it all vaccines. Well, then they have to release it back to your, in front of your house. And so we still have the same amount of animals that are here, but now our, our number of how, what, how we, what mu- how much we pay has now skyrocketed for our budget. So those are two things to consider, um, as we look at this budget, um, is those, those two items they would like us to do as well as a educational piece in our newsletter or wherever.
Send me stuff.
We, we put seven thousand in the budget, so we're, we're good. I just changed it down to three.
It's just over three, so I'll send it to you.
Okay, so they, they get ticketed. I mean, if your animal gets taken to the shelter, you get a ticket too, right? I mean, it, there, it's not as though the city absorbs the entirety of the penalty.
Uh, depends on, um, where it's picked up and who has the authority to enforce it. So.
I usually have to go looking for your pet.
Our enforcement officer would have to ticket them. But the deputy can ticket them if it's a, if it's a lost animal, if they choose to, but not a lot of law enforcement.
The shelter does not impose, like when you go spring your animal from jail.
You have to pay and the city has to pay. Both have to pay.
All right, well.
Just an FYI.
Thank you. Okay, um, possible items for upcoming city council meeting. So we already talked about the fee and then the, uh, social media policies.
If we get that resolved before.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so.
But put it on the list for future and then we'll see where we're at.
Okay, so maybe Jody, if you would, put that.
The, and the buy, high out for the Skids dear lease. Those are the two things that I wrote down.
Uh, yeah, that's true. We do, that needs to at least be discussed. Yeah. Okay. Anything else that anybody wants? All right, oh. Did you say um?
No.
And then I cut you off?
No, I just, you know, I've heard from a couple resident, I heard that we have some residents that are distraught because they think that their way of life is gonna be destroyed and that they have to sell their house because of three bridges.
I know.
I'm hearing this from older people.
I hear that too. They, they have to sell their house because of three bridges?
It's in our, people in our, somebody in our ward, I can tell you after privately, but they think that, they think that their way of life is gonna be destroyed up here because of three, there's still so much misconception about it. And I mean, it's not great. I don't love it. But there's so much miss, so much rumor going around. And, um, this family, they think, like, they're prepared. They think they're gonna have to sell their house and they're like, just really upset about it, like, because they, for whatever reason, they think this three bridges.
And your ward is far away from it.
Is gonna change our way of life up here in Woodland Hills so much and that, like, that it's going to happen immediately. I don't know, I do, there, I don't know what to do about it, but there, I've, I'm hearing.
Getting squeezed on all three sides, except for the mountainside.
I, it just kind of is what it is.
Are where our boundaries are.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm certainly open to suggestions, but I, I mean, it is privately owned and it's not even in our city, so I, I.
Well, and that was a comment that I heard too, was darn Woodland Hills approved it, dah 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 dah. And it's like, no, we didn't. You know what I mean? It's not even in our city limits.
I think people just forget, and that's, that's to Larry's point about everybody trespassing. They've just been so used to it, being there and thinking that it's part of the public land because they've walked up on the switchbacks, they've walked over to Maple Canyon, they've rode their four-wheelers there because the Davises didn't care so much. Even if, if they didn't know that Davises owned it and was private property. And now that it is being developed and Larry's saying no, they're like, well, we've always done it. Why not? Right?
Yeah.
So, an educational piece that it's not in our city, it is private. And it's the same thing we had with the, with what we used to call the meadows. Oh, and it was, everything above was just considered public land.
Post something.
I just remind people that we are all benefactors of development.
In the newsletter, maybe.
I mean, we, and.
Now that they're digging, I just don't want people to panic. You know what I mean? It's not even by us, but still.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I, I think that, I mean, I'm happy to try to at least.
I don't know if it's gonna do any good.
Our position on, on, I mean, I, cause, I mean, who wouldn't like to freeze, uh, ideal community in time, but I mean, I, that's.
I'll tell you after who this couple is. I would maybe just, maybe as the mayor, you should go over and have a little chat with him.
Okay, well, uh, that, that's fair. So let's talk after. All right, so as a future agenda item, Janet wants to stop all development.
Yes, absolutely. Can we please?
As a real estate agent, or I mean, not a real estate agent, but.
I don't get any of that title work anyway, so I don't care.
All right.
Cut it off.
Okay, we'll put that on our agenda.
I kid.
I kid too.
All right, well then let's take a break and reconvene at seven fifty-five. Okay, thanks, Jody. All right, let's call the meeting to order and, uh, ask, uh, Councilmember Kinnison if you would offer an invocation and then Councilmember Hilliard if you would lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be here this evening and to serve our city as best we can. We are grateful for the blessings we have and for the beauty that surround us, surrounds us in this great place to live. We ask thy spirit to be with us to help us to make good decisions that will benefit our residents. We are thankful for the opportunity we have to serve and work with one another and we are grateful for this. And we say these and things in the. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item 13, public comments. Severin, you're the, you're the public. Got anything to say? You don't have to answer that. Does anybody have public comment and?
I said it back there, but I got my first bill from Waste Management for $5 for having two full of a can. So just a heads up out there if anyone's listening.
Sounds like something for the newsletter, huh?
I'm good. I wrote it down. I'm gonna put it in there.
So how full is two full?
If your lid is, I mean, it can be cracked a little bit, but if it's like open, I don't know. And it was because my husband had forgot to put the can out the week before, so we had like two weeks.
Well, I've, I've seen those cans.
Yeah, crammed it there.
Where you got boxes surrounding it and.
But they will mail you an invoice. I believe I have it in my purse. They, no, I ripped it up and threw it away, cause I was angry. Um.
Happy you paid it, right?
I paid it. But yeah, they'll mail you an invoice and they want, they want it paid by the end of the month, your $5. Wow.
Well, that's a valuable lesson.
We're glad to have an offender on the council.
Yeah, no kidding. That might be, uh, grounds for impeachment.
Yeah, yeah.
Sweet.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We held these until we went to training.
So they just want everybody to buy more cans.
So it was suggested that I should get, cause I have a recycled can that I hardly even use and it's a lot more expensive. So I'm going to make a phone call and get rid of that and get two regular cans and then I won't get fined anymore.
Yeah.
That's the spirit.
And most of, most of us take them out every week too.
Yeah, that helps. An alarm.
It's my husband's job and he's forgetting.
Okay, we don't wanna get in the middle of your marriage. We already know he's volunteering you for, uh, your, uh, Yellowstone.
Acres.
Yeah.
Y'all, I'm on y'all, Yellowstone acres.
All right. Thank you for that public comment, Janet.
Okay.
Uh, item 14, March 26, 2024, city council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Lunt, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Oh, that's a roll call vote, right?
Consent?
Consent? I don't think so.
No.
No.
Okay. All right, good. Item, uh, 15.
I'll make a motion that we award the contract for the completion of the strategic plan and general plan to Sunrise.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Lunt. Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item 16, decision on usage of emergency fire exit off Maple Drive.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so let's, I, I think that.
Specify, cause as he presented it.
Yeah, so I think that it would be worthwhile to.
Discuss.
Well, or to at least make it specific that.
Okay, I will make a motion that we continue with the agreement that was put in place between Woodland Hills, the Davis Ranch and Salem City for continuing to have that be a, a fire escape. Um, also can, are we also wanting to talk about the, the water usage or?
No, no, we'll have to do that another time.
Next time.
So just pretty much per the previous agreement, that it'll just only be used in case of emergency for a fire escape.
And have a gate, that the gate remains.
And the gate remains.
Untaved on our part.
But the new development also needs to keep that road in place. I mean, I, right? They've gotta keep.
Correct. Well, so, I mean, essentially, the question that Salem has asked is, do we approve that Three Bridges completed and improved roadway that connects into Woodland? Or do we approve the completed and improved roadway that connects to Woodland Hills at that fire escape? So I thi, I think that's one thing that we wanna make sure that we're clearly approving and then with respect.
Not a thoroughfare.
Yeah, not a road.
It's still gated.
Just an emergency, I think we clarify emergency.
It's a non-coldessac dead end per the agreement.
Okay, so.
Cause that, I believe, is what you were talking about the other day, is it is a dead end, not a cul-de-sac.
That's my understanding, yeah. All right, so.
This is a long motion and it was so finely worded, I'll second it.
Thank you, Doral. Did you get that though? Maybe you wanna read it back, just so we can make sure that we're, uh. Okay.
I do think that we need to make sure that it, we put the words in that it's emergency.
It's an emergency exit only.
Exit only.
Yeah, correct. Emergency exit only.
Not access.
No, that's not what the agreement says. The agreement says it's an emergency both ways. So it's not just an exit for us, it's an exit for them as well.
Yeah, that's why I say emergency exit, because it would be either or, depending on who needs to exit.
But it's not gonna be a main driving path that they drive every day.
That's correct, but that was one of the concerns that was brought up in many of those meetings was that if they were exiting, cause people are gonna wanna exit through Woodland Hills, if it's, you know, i, i, and, and they didn't, they also didn't want that even during the fire, even during an emergency, so. Just needs to be clear.
My motion does not include that. It is an exit for both directions.
Both directions, correct.
In a case of an emergency.
It does save life.
Yep.
Yes, it needs to be.
All right.
With the Doral of a second.
All right.
And it remains gated. It remains gated.
Right.
Correct.
Motion and then seconded by Councilmember Kenniston, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? That motion carries. Um, resolution 202417, appointment of Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee co-chairs and secretary.
So I move that we, uh, that we, that we adopt the resolution 202417 as written.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Hutchings.
I'll second that one too.
Seconded by Councilmember Kenniston, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution is, is a roll call or is that, okay?
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item 18, approval of the large purchases, specifically the lease for the loader and ratification of the purchase for the fire and EMS, emergency communication radios.
I'll make a motion. Approve those?
A motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. Uh, that's roll call. Okay, Councilmember Hutchings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yep.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. That motion carries. Um, there was some discussion of going into a closed session regarding a recent development. Um, Wayne, I don't know if, would you like to or would you?
I think we'd like to know the development.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, uh, and, and, uh.
I'll second it.
I, I think that it's important to specify that it relates to legal proceedings.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to go into closed session for legal proceeding discussion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hilliard, seconded by Councilmember Lunt. Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session. Uh, Severin, I believe that.
We're, we're in the middle of going to it. We're about to go into it.
Okay, we turned mics off.
No, I think. Okay, uh, we are back in, uh, open session. Okay, a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Malkovich.
I second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Lunt, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody online. See ya.
Thank you, guys.